All of our productions at GCTV are brought to you in part by The Arbers at Greenfield, assisted living community providing a unique balance of independence and personal care that offers residents and families the most precious gift of all: peace of mind. Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, or call them at 413-422-1143. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all the productions at Greenfield Community Television.
Thank you all for coming. This is a magnificent demonstration of the interest in the state of information, and it's a demonstration also of the concerns and issues of Vietnam veterans and their families. This event was coordinated by Tim McGonigal at the Upper Pioneer Valley Veterans Center, working in concert with so many other groups, and we want to thank them, I'm not going to name them now. Seeing most of them, working with the Veterans Administration, visiting one group out of Wister and Northampton. We appreciate their contributions. Contribution of local groups in Greenfield who have partnered with this project. And certainly, we want to thank President Puyor for opening up this fine space for us at no charge, and to accommodate the veteran community working closely with their veteran office, Chris Burns, from GCC. Thank you, Mr. President. In addition, I'd like to say that this is such an old issue, but there's such new information. It's imperative upon us to try to get that information out to as many people as possible. Tim is going to open up the symposium, I call it a symposium because in 1983, we had a similar type of event in South Deerfield, what at that time was a mountain. Charles Spigley, one of the leaders in researching and providing treatment options for stress, was there. A couple of doctors from Ross University, and we also had Dr. Tong, North Vietnamese researcher. His report on study of the oxygen contamination with the NDA, which had no exposure and the South Vietnamese BC or NDA in the South. And that study, the Lactitumal study at the time, produced some, you might say horrifying information, but some statistics along the lines of made certainly Vietnam veterans conscious of the potential for exposure to the many different chemicals out there in Vietnam. From that moment, and the guest speaker at that time in 1983 was a lieutenant governor named John Carey. And we had a great turnout, had great discussions, and hopefully, BBA will continue to do their part as they have done since I arrived there. So, back to the future again. My last comment before I bring Tim McGonigal up is to thank you all who have served, thank your families for the sacrifice. It's such a cliche to say welcome back, but really, it's really great to be here with you. Thank you. So, just something, admin announcements. You see, there's a lot of recording going on around you. We're producing DVDs of this event for a lot of veterans that couldn't come here because they were too far away, and they had calls from all over the country. The other thing is, if you're looking for a chair, there's a balcony above us there, there's another 40 chairs up there. So, please, find a seat so you'll be comfortable and you can hear what's going on today. But, when we get into the question and answer period here later, because of the recordings that are going on, please don't give any intimate personal information during your questions. They'll be pending time afterward to do that, one-on-one with some of the people here. We have here today a few claims to set up an appointment with you. People from the VFW Claims Office, people from my office are here to do claims, people from Guma Sindo's office, under the umbrella of the BBA are here to do claims. So you can set up appointments with them, and they can help you with any claims that might arise out of the issues that we'll discuss today. So if you'll join me for a shortened vacation given by Jen Moser from Franklin and Oxford County, and then we can get going. Jen?
This is from Navy Chaplain Vietnam Veteran Arnold Resinoff. "Spirit of life whom we call by many names in thanksgiving and in anguish. Let us remember all the lives of our Vietnam veterans. Some 2,500 years ago, the Prophet Jeremiah cried out, the words filled with pain and anguish, words of despair, words which might have come out of the mouths of our Vietnam veterans struggling to reclaim their lives. Why had they been submitted?" he asked. "And then, for us, was there no healing? We looked for peace, but we could find none. We looked for a time of healing, and behold, we found terror. Help us ease the terror and pain of all who suffered because of war, and help us, all of us present here, to help them find their way to peace. Let our time together this afternoon remind us that while we come together to mourn our dead, we are here to reach out to all of you today, all of you exposed to Agent Orange. It is when we remember and honor our brave soldiers that we have the vision to dream our dreams again, that we have the faith to pray our prayers again. Today, may we have the courage to listen and learn from each other together. We honor all of our Vietnam veterans, their families, their spouses, their children who support them. And of course, we honor all the men and women in uniform today, tomorrow, and their families too. But most of all, we pray that we honor always our nation, its values, its freedoms, and its dreams. And to this may we say, amen."
Thank you, Jen. She won't tell you, but her ex-husband passed from Agent Orange, he was a special forces captain, served multiple tours in Vietnam, so that's why I was close to Jen. Again, you know how those politicians are. That was a joke. But what I wanted to say is that it's wonderful to have Secretary of Massachusetts Department of Veteran Affairs, Francisco Ranga here with us, and also the lead point man for the United Veterans of America Legislative Director, Rick White. Both these individuals bring history knowledge, motivation, dedication to veterans. And Secretary Ranga, Marine vet, Purple Heart, has been in the trench associate, working as a veteran service officer, and now leads the entire Veteran Service Chapter 115 program in Massachusetts. We're fortunate to have him here, but we're more fortunate to have him in the position he holds as a pointe of Veteran Vega. So, Secretary. What a great afternoon to be here in Greenfield, what a great facility this is, and Greenfield Community College, and what a great privilege it is to be in front of all of our Vietnam veterans that have showed up here and their families. And so in that spirit of welcoming, I know many of you all received your welcome home this morning, I want you all to always wear this with honor and pride as a symbol of our appreciation collectively of your service to our country. It was our Vietnam veterans who in 1991, at the turn of the Gulf War, said, "Never again will we welcome the next generation of veterans the way you all weren't welcome." And so to that, my generation, the Iraq and Afghanistan veterans, thank you all for your commitment, your sacrifice, and the aspect of your ability to say "never again." And so, let us all give our Vietnam veterans a great round of applause for their service and dedication. On behalf of our Governor Charlie Baker, Lieutenant Governor Polito, 365,000 veterans who call Massachusetts home, I truly am honored to lead the Department of Veteran Services, working alongside of our veteran service officers, many who are here today, but I really want to thank Tim for his leadership, not only in organizing and coordinating this great event with so many partners in and around this room, but also what he does towards the town of Greenfield and the district, ensuring that veterans and families do not go without getting the services and the safety that he provides. So I want to give Tim a great round of applause. As you're going to be having the voice to walk out of this room in power, knowing what's available for not only our Vietnam veterans, but knowing what's available for the community. And essentially, each and every one of you all are going to be the voice, not only for Tim, but for our department and for everything that happens in and across the western part of the states. It is a very special part that I want to recognize Superintendent Bennett Walsh, who today is also acting as photographer. But I want to recognize this guy who's up here. Superintendent Walsh is the superintendent of the Holyoke Soldier Sholm, a very special institution, and a very aspect of what makes Western Mass a special part of our veterans community. Providing long-term care for our veterans, providing the aspect of community, and providing a great option for volunteering for many veterans and members of this great community. I want to recognize the veterans and also the leadership of the VA, who is a great institution here in the western part, as central and western Mass VA, and thank you for the great commitment. In that aspect of VA, and there are many proud veterans in Vietnam who probably are not have ever thought about walking into the VA. And let me tell you, I go to the VA because I believe in what they do. I go to the VA because I know that it is a great aspect of research that happens there, but it is a place that cares about our veterans. And so, don't be, do not miss another opportunity today to sign up for VA healthcare, because it is truly a great benefit that you have earned because of your service to our country. Let me thank you all once again. Let me thank each and every family member this year, because whether you were drafted, or you were enlisted, or you were an officer, our families, your families, anybody who has worn our nation's uniform, your families also sacrificed, and it is our turn today to thank you to your families, to our military families who are here, because it is their aspect, we also want to empower them with the information to be alongside you all as veterans. On behalf once again of our department, our two soldier sholms and our two state cemeteries, I really want to thank you all for being here and being part of this great day and leaving out of here better than when you came in. And I truly believe that, and I truly want to ensure that this community continues to empower one another, because at the end of the day, that is something that we truly have the ability to do. Thank you, Mayor, thank you to everyone in my distinguished cabin that is up here. Enjoy and make this day the very best you can. Thank you so very much, God bless you all. A lot of people here. We have a Coast Guard veteran who likes to make stuff out of the U.S. Cemetery flags, and this is a little piece of history that everybody can take with that at speech today. So, thank you for coming, Francisco. Secretary Ranga has some prior commitments, so he may leave at any minute, he said we have another function for 3 o'clock, he's in a lot of demand. Our next speaker, when we sat down and started planning this, we said, "Well, what's an area that we're having a lot of confusion about when we file claims for Agent Orange?" And far away, the most difficult area that we file claims for is heart-related issues. Under the VA, diseases that fall under, you can correct me, ischemic, ischemic, heart issues. You know, we were kind of confused as to should we be filing a claim for this veteran or not? There's a lot of them that come through and think they're having heart issues, we should file Agent Orange claims. So we sat down and we said, "We need to get an expert in this, and we'd like to get an expert outside of the VA system, because up here in Franklin County, a lot of our veterans don't use a VA because they don't qualify." So that's one of the things we hope that you can get taken care of today, is getting your questions answered about qualifying for VA healthcare. You don't need your G214 here with you today. There's a lot of VA people here that can set you up, help you file for an application, and if you have existing claims, there's a department here that can check on your existing claims. And again, if you have any questions, or anything that comes out of today's presentation that you feel you need more information, or you should be filing a claim, we have claims officers here from multiple branches. We have claims officers here from the BBA, we have the VA medical claims officers here, we have my staff. Any one of these people can help you set up an appointment today, file a claim, or help you gather information. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce another veteran, Navy veteran, a Desert Storm, who went on to become a cardiologist, Dr. Benjamin Prentice, from the Haywood Melville.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to first start off by echoing the sentiment of the politicians that have even the microphone here and say, it is absolutely a great honor to be here today in front of so many Vietnam veterans and families, and people who really know what it is to sacrifice. So it is a pleasure, thank you very much for having me here. So, as Tim mentioned, I was asked to speak today on ischemic, pardon me, ischemic. So, and when I was asked, I said, "Sure, this would be great," and I put together this whole big great PowerPoint presentation, and then on my way here, Tim said, "Oh, we're not using PowerPoint." I said, "Okay, well, that's a problem, but I think we can get through this." But I just know that I had plenty of great, pretty pictures to explain things, but I'll have to do it with my hands. So, in essence, ischemic heart disease boils down to limited blood flow to certain areas of the heart muscle, and the after-effects of having limited blood flow. Now that can take form in many ways. As people know, it can cause heart attacks, but it can also cause angina, exercise limiting, chest pain, which is what angina is. That's related to ischemic heart disease. Now, there is some difference on actually which elements of those will qualify somebody to actually have, you know, benefits paid for, but in essence, it will make it to blockages of the arteries. And in 2010, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, I think the VA finally said that they will qualify ischemic heart disease as a presumptive cause of coronary artery disease for patients that were exposed to Agent Orange. Now, to be fair, we treat a lot of ischemic heart disease, and if we're all lucky to live long enough, everybody will have some element of it. It basically starts off with cholesterol, fatty streets developing in the arteries, but it's not just a static process of concrete developing in the arteries and your arteries hardening. It's a process of inflammation and scarring and immune system activation that leads to different processes, different results in different patients. So, you know, the typical risk factors that we think of, that most of us know, diabetes, smoking, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, all these things contribute to developing ischemic heart disease. And having some plaque in the arteries isn't necessarily the end of the world, but what can be the end of the world is if that plaque becomes unstable, ruptures, and clots off. That's when people have sudden heart attacks, and I'm sure almost everybody in this room knows somebody who was walking, talking, doing fine one day, and dead the next from a sudden heart attack. And it's still the nation's number one killer, and in fact, it's the number one killer worldwide. And used to be a malady that we associated with developed nations, but more and more, it's becoming, second and third world countries are suffering from increasing incidence of heart disease. So, the ischemic heart disease can take a lot of forms, and it can be difficult to figure out, okay? The coronary arteries are tiny, they're about four millimeters at their biggest segments, and then they can taper down from there. They sit deep inside your chest, and they can give people different symptoms. What might be an anginal presentation for one person might be completely different for another person. But in essence, angina, however you like to pronounce it, is pain, pressure, tightness, heaviness, shortness of breath, essentially anything between here and here, if it comes on with exertion and gets better with rest, we would have a very high index of suspicion to think that that's ischemic heart disease. Now, going about diagnosing that can be difficult. There's a lot of modalities that we have to offer, but they're not, none of them are 100%, let's say, short of going for the gold standard, which is a heart catheterization. Now, some of you in the room may have had heart catheterizations before, and there's a few different reasons why you would have had a heart catheterization. If you've suffered a heart attack, a sudden heart attack, and been lucky to get to the hospital, I'm sure you went straight to a catheterization lab equipment and had that artery opened up, or if the ischemic heart disease or the blockages of the arteries were too severe, maybe you needed to have bypass surgery. These are both modalities of treating ischemic heart disease, and each one comes about for different reasons. So, you may, people may be familiar with exercise stress testing. It's the, when you hitch on the treadmill, and we watch your heart, and we have you exercise and see how well can you exercise, but also we're looking for evidence on your EKG, your electrocardiogram, if you have blocked arteries. Now, that is, again, not 100% diagnostic. It's not even frequent, we can have false positives and false negatives with that type of testing. So, you may use imaging in addition to having somebody exercise on the treadmill, either using echocardiograms, ultrasound pictures of the heart, both before and after you exercise, to make some assessment of how your heart responds to that stress. If you have a tight blockage in an artery and you exercise, and that artery doesn't get enough blood flow while you're exercising, well, the heart muscle doesn't work as well in that particular territory. And generally, you can get an idea of that by doing just stress testing. Also, there's nuclear stress testing where we take images of the heart both before and after exercise with a similar role of identifying tight blockages in the arteries. So, tight blockages of the arteries is one process of ischemic heart disease. The other part of that is an acute heart attack. Like we talked about before, heart attacks can happen very suddenly, and it's not that a, you know, you get a blockage in your artery, and it just gets tighter and tighter and tighter and tighter, and eventually closes off. In the vast majority of times, that's not the case. What happens is, you have a blockage of an artery, it can be 30, 40, 50% narrowed, and it suddenly becomes unstable, ruptures and clots off. That's, again, how people have a sudden heart attack. Those type of things, we can't, you know, no stress testing can really identify that type of problem, because they come on suddenly, and the blockage is not severe enough to be picked up by a stress testing modality. So, with imaging or without imaging. And so people oftentimes may have a heart attack, and that's when you get treated with a stent or bypass surgery to open up arteries. The only thing that really reduces your risk for heart attacks is controlling the risk factors. All of the other fancy stuff that we can do, you know, stress testing, stents, and bypass surgery, and all these type of things, they help to restore blood flow to an artery that's not getting adequate blood flow, but it really doesn't reduce your risk for heart attacks. The only thing that reduces the risk is controlling the risk factors. Again, smoking, diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol. There are some other identified risks such as radiation exposure, exposure particularly in the area of the heart, or chronic inflammatory conditions, rheumatoid arthritis and the like can contribute to developing heart disease, because like I started off saying, it's not a static process of just, you know, this really hard plaque developing in the arteries. It's a very dynamic metabolic process, and it's very much inflammatory driven. And I think that, well, there's not good science on this, that's probably where the Agent Orange exposure may start this process of causing inflammation and initial injury to the arteries, which then goes on to start plaque development. Again, that's not known, but purely speculative. So, again, treatment for ischemic heart disease, stents, bypass surgery, but also, I'd be very remiss as a cardiologist if we didn't talk about the other treatments such as diet and exercise. I'm sure you've all heard that when you've gone to your doctor endlessly. But those truly are things that can make a great difference. Regular exercise, 30 minutes a day for three or four times a week can substantially reduce your risk for diabetes, high cholesterol, high blood pressure, ischemic heart disease. But also, there's been plenty of studies done that show that it helps with mood, sleep, arthritis, cognitive function, brain function. So, if there ever were a magic pill, it would be regular exercise. So, that is imperative in the treatment, and particularly the prevention, ideally the prevention of ischemic heart disease, would be those lifestyle modifications that we can all use a little bit more of. Also, a word on diet. The science, nutrition science is a very vast topic and ever-expanding, and we're learning more and more about it. And certainly, an in-depth discussion about dietary measures is well beyond the scope of today's talk. But suffice it to say that everything in moderation. You know, we used to think that cholesterol, dietary cholesterol, and dietary fat were the bad players, because it made sense to think, "Well, geez, if I eat this hamburger that has some cholesterol in it and some fat, that that's going to immediately de-deposit my arteries and go down the road of ischemic, developing ischemic heart disease." Not necessarily the case, and it's been well documented in the nutrition literature that, again, fat and dietary cholesterol are not necessarily the bad players. Saturated fat is a bad player, but there are plenty of good fats as well in a lot of foods that we eat. And, but the real bad player, particular in our diets here in the western hemisphere, are the refined sugars, the refined carbohydrates, that's, you know, all the good stuff, the crackers, the cookies, the chips, the sugary drinks, as has been well documented here over the past 10 years, that are really contributing to the obesity epidemic here in the United States. So, but again, the short story is everything in moderation, and try to minimize the dietary concentrated sugar that are available in most foods that are pre-processed. So, I think with that being said, well, there's also medications that I'm sure a lot of you are also familiar with, medications that can treat ischemic heart disease with cholesterol medications, blood pressure medications. medications, blood pressure medications, and aspirin, taking to aspirin, call me in the morning, that was, came about, but it's actually true because of the antiplatelet, the, basically the blood that can affect of aspirin, which is one of the oldest drugs that we have available, but it's still one of the most important medications that we use in treating ischemic heart disease. So, I think as it would fit for today's discussion, if you have had stents placing in your heart in the past, if you've had bypass surgery, if you've actually had a heart attack, if you've, in some instances, congestive heart failure can also be a result of having prior heart attacks. So, if you've had any of these in your past medical history, I think it would certainly enable you to look into potential VA benefits, particularly with, as it's relative to Agent Orange exposure. I think that's about all I have, and I don't have time to have just a couple of questions. Are you glad we fielded any questions?
Way in the back there.
And remember, we're being videotaped, so try to not give out too much personal information.
Yeah, I'm Vietnam veteran, I have ischemic heart disease, Agent Orange, I had a heart attack about a year and a half ago. I'm actually doing quite well, because I feel a whole lot better, but I'm wondering about the progress, is there a progressive concern, or will things sort of stabilize? I mean, I'm not looking forward to another heart attack right now, and I want to enjoy my life as much as possible right now. And I also really appreciate the help of the VA, so to speak.
Great, well, thank you for your service. So, that's a great question, is this a progressive disease? Well, yes, in a lot of ways, it is progressive, unless, like I mentioned earlier, unless we control the risk factors. It's those out-of-control risk factors that lead toward progressive blockages developing in the arteries, but more worrisome, unstable blockages in the arteries that are more likely to suddenly rupture and clot off and cause a blood clot. So, again, to answer your question, if you're keeping the risk factors under control, your blood pressure, your cholesterol, you're on good medications to help in that regard, but also getting the regular exercise and paying attention to your dietary intake, that will help stabilize any existing plaque in the arteries, and ideally prevents any plaque instability that causes sudden heart attacks. So, the good news is, I would say that as long as you do the heavy lifting of keeping the risk factors under control, it shouldn't be progressive in that way.
Oh, yeah, I have a question. I had, I had ischemic attack, described somewhere, just about with words, is ischemic heart disease, you're talking about, caused that?
Yes, very good question. So, a transient ischemic attack is what I think you're talking about, a small stroke. And yes, the relationship between the heart and the brain is very integrated. The same process that affects the coronary arteries, this atherosclerosis, this plaque developing in the arteries, coronary arteries, is a systemic process. So, if we see it here in the heart, well, we also know it's gonna be coming up here in the vessel that feeds your brain, can be in your aorta, can be in the arteries going to the legs and the kidneys. So, to answer your question, yes, very closely related to ischemic heart disease, but this is essentially a similar process, a similar pathology, but going to a different end organ, the brain, as opposed to the heart. Thank you, Scotty, similar.
I had, so, could you clarify that for me in the sense that when I had this attack, I was just babbling, it really took me back, and I didn't realize what I had, but do you have to have, you know, this ischemic heart disease, does that have to be just caused by plaque mostly, or not? Is that you have any plaque issues?
Yeah, in the vast majority of cases, relative to ischemic heart disease, the vast majority of those cases are plaque-related or unstable plaque-related. Oftentimes, the things that go up to the brain and cause a stroke, or even a small or transient stroke, sometimes it can be very difficult to identify where that came from. Sometimes it's a little bit of a blood clot, frequently from the heart, sometimes you know, funny, heart rhythm can develop blood clots in the heart, and those can go up to the brain and cause these type of episodes, which are, as you know, are quite scary and profound, and thankfully, sometimes you can recover. So. The last question, and if we have any more, we can take a little side view.
I've got a question, I'm here too, I was here in my bedroom. I had an aneurysm in my heart, and they brought it in time by accident, but that followed in the same category?
Yes, so aneurysms are, they're another variety of category of issues that affect the arteries. So, this is not, I'm not sure exactly, was it down here in your abdomen?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a similar process in that it starts with plaque and injury to the arteries, and then causes a lot of different, a lot of different changes, particularly in that area. So, it sounds like what the issue you're discussing is what's called an abdominal aneurysm, and those, while it's a similar pathologic process, like I mentioned with the previous question, you know, it's a systemic process. We see it here, well, we have a good idea that some of it's in the aorta or in the arteries going to the legs or kidneys. So, but it's also affected by a lot of the similar risk factors, diabetes, and smoking, and high blood pressure, and high cholesterol. So, you know, all of those interventions trying to keep your risk factors under control, they benefit all of the vasculature, all of your blood vessels. But, yeah, in short, that is very similar process to ischemic heart disease, absolutely. Anybody got a short, quick question, Scott? And then we'll wrap it up for Dr. Prentice, because Vice Secretary Rayman, there aren't a man all the time, so.
Okay, good point, mine, my husband, I'm seeing only three exact names, that became Agent Orange. He has a heart blockage in his artery, he's trying to get covered to the VA, but if you spin him around in a circle and say, it's not part of Agent Orange.
Well, I think that, you know, our following speakers here may be better able to address that, because they deal directly with the VA, and any actual benefits and claims. Thank you, Dr. Prentice. So, like I said, Secretary Rayman has another agent, and Dr. Prentice being head cardiologist, he could get up and add anything to it. So, the next group of speakers that I'd like to introduce are headed by Dr. Rapp Cross from the VA, Western Mass, Central Mass VA system, so, Dr. Cross?
Thanks, Billy. My boss is gonna talk first.
Hi, I'm Seth Kupfer Schmidt, I'm Seth Kupfer Schmidt, and I am the Chief of Staff of the VA, and it is a pleasure and an honor to be here. This is an amazing turnout, that I've been to a number of town halls, and I see well over 200, maybe approaching 250 people here. That is wonderful for, you know, an area this size, and it says a lot about your dedication and interest in VA affairs and in what you guys can do for yourselves. I would also like to use this moment to ask you guys to reach out to the other people, younger generation, who may not know about the VA and the benefits that they may be getting, and bring them in to us. The VA doesn't always have a great reputation, but as of less than two weeks ago, Secretary Shulkin, new head of the VA, has put the wait time for every VA facility online, so you can see how long it would take to get an appointment, and so you can see at the VA, Central Mass, Western Massachusetts, we can get you in pretty darn quickly, and we will map Valley Medical Group, fully consent, base date, we're, you know, we are very competitive. And if you go to any of those other places, they have some of the same staff groups that we have. So, please, use the VA for yourselves, but most of all, help us get in the younger generation, so that we can be of service to them. To follow up, I would definitely like to thank Greenfield Community College for their, for the use of the space. But we also have a number of people here who are doing wonderful things, that Mary Howes from the VA is in fact promoting the hepatitis C treatment that we're doing, that the VA, Central Mass, Western Massachusetts, has the highest cure rate of its veterans across, at least New England, if not the United States, for treatment of hepatitis C, a condition that has been not well recognized until more recently, and now we have really, really good treatment, that can be six weeks, about, be 12 weeks by now, with pills, very simple, straightforward, and curative. That's a tremendous thing that we're doing. But, and follow up on Dr. Prentice, one of you out there was my patient, and I will call you Max Painful to save your identity, but Max came to me a couple of years ago complaining about his angina, and he was on a number of medications, and he put on a fair amount of weight since retiring, and it's like, doc, doc, you know, you're not doing anything for me. And he was on all the right stuff, and it's like, oh, Max, you gotta help yourself, tell me, come on, what are you eating on a typical day? Well, I have my eater's soda, I have a pizza, some fast food, and he spoke about this diet, and it's like, Max, you gotta, you gotta work with me. And Max just scowled at me and sort of went for the first year, and then going into Christmas time 2015, Max didn't show up for his appointment. Hmm, that's interesting, so, you know, we reschedule him, he shows up a couple of months later, and Max has lost 20 pounds. I was like, Max, what's going on? You know, all of your harping about that soda, and the pizza, and the fast food, and that stuff, I just, I just didn't give it, you know, see, he meant it. So, I started eating simple chicken, drinking water, I cut out bread. His ability to walk, which was, you know, he had his angina for a couple hundred feet, by the following Christmas, he was back to his bowling league, he was 40 pounds lighter. Says, no, it's miserable being on a diet, doing this, but to be able to do my daily things, and to be able to enjoy, it's worth the sacrifice. So, you know, he took the medicine to his own hands, and it made a big, big difference. So, thank you, Dr. Prentice. So, we have here Rapp Cross, who is our compensation and pension specialist, which is a very important part of the VA, VBA, and getting in for the benefits, and we also have Brenda Wolf, she works with Rapp, and it sort of helps coordinate that whole compensation and pension division, and helps our group do a tremendous job there. So, it's wonderful to have her here, on her day off, putting in extra, you know, working above and beyond. An event like this couldn't happen without a number of dedicated people, which include from the VA, Dennis Ransing, who's in back, hiding behind the camera now, and John Arrie, who also has done wonderful advocacy for everyone in pulling together events and making sure that you folks are being recognized for the sacrifices that you have made. And so, I would like to thank him, and again, would like to ask you to be the recruiters for the new generation, to help them get all that they are entitled to and deserve. So, thank you very much.
I can't dress as Dr. Agent Orange. So, I'm kind of curious, you don't look that different from me, how many people in this room, Vietnam veterans, are under 60? Very few. How about between 60 and 70? Pretty good number. How about 70 to 80? Even though I'm not a Vietnam veteran, I'm gonna raise my hand. Over 80? A few. So, it's mostly 60 to 70, and 70 to 80. How many of you is from Franklin County? Pretty good number, pretty good number. Any of you ever heard from the town of Buckland? Yeah, that's where I grew up.
I'm on Texas.
Huh?
I'm on Texas.
Texas, I was at for only a summer, but I'm really pleased to be here today. When I came to Amherst today, there were hundreds of thousands of people on sidewalks, marching to the center of Amherst. They were having the Amherst Sustainability Festival. And I thought of you guys, you Vietnam veterans, you, not just guys, but all of you who are Vietnam veterans, because you've got sustainability by God, you're still going, and I congratulate you for that. And at the same time, there is a sadness, because we all have people who did not make it. I'm glad you're all here, and I am wanting to talk about various conditions that are potentially compensable under the compensation and pension regulations. Some of you may know me, I've done medicine around here for quite a few years, one way or another, and we doctors in some ways are like lawyers, you know, they're specialists. You might go to a lawyer for the finances, you might go because some reason accusing you of, you know, stealing something, there are various specialists. Well, in medicine, a good many doctors treat people, just like your doctors treat you, but there's another type of physician out there who does what they call forensic medicine. And I think it's important you all understand, that the process of compensation and pension involves forensic, objective analysis of people who put in claims, of the information that they submit, of what we find on a history and physical, when we see them, what we get from documentation from doctors, and how we answer the very specific forms that are put out there for us to report on claim conditions. So, it's a very object and detailed forensic medicine, and I'm pleased to do it. I have been down at the VA since 2009, and when I was there, I never heard of compensation and pension, what on earth is that? I found out fairly quickly. We have the busy department, we have a lot of claims to deal with, and so good Amherst, so I'm pleased to be there, and I'm pleased to be speaking to all of you today. In terms of conditions that are service-connected from the VA, I do want to follow up just a little bit on the cardiac ischemic heart there, and that really the compensable plans deal with the heart itself, not with the brain, not with the aorta, primarily with the heart. Does the heart get damaged in any way, and are there problems with it that disable you from doing things? And if any of that comes your way, my golly, yes, you can put in a claim. Claims from Vietnam are kind of divided, and there were two very quick onset conditions that you may have or may not have heard of. One is called peripheral neuropathy, and somebody who's in the service, when they get out, if, in a Vietnam, post-Age or Morning, if within one year of leaving at your duty, you develop a peripheral neuropathy, that's something to put a claim in for, and if that had been true- And if that had been true of any of you, you'd have done that a long time ago. There are a lot of other causes of peripheral neuropathy, and so, which are compensable, but we'll get to that. But just peripheral neuropathy, acute onset, during that year of getting out of Vietnam, getting out of active duty, that's one that's compensable. And if, and if you didn't put in a claim for that and get seen and get diagnosed, it becomes difficult in later years to get a claim anonymous. Another one is something called chloracne. And we all know acne, and most of us had it when we were kids. Um, but there are some very deforming, disturbing types of acne out there. And one is called chloracne. And I have seen plenty of pictures of it, I'm not sure I've ever actually seen somebody with it. That's another one that occurs within one year of leaving active duty service, where you have Agent Orange exposure. It's an acute onset, so that neuropathy and the chloracne are acute onset. And if any of you follow the news, there was this guy named Yevdushenko, I believe he was from Ukraine, and in London, 2003, 2004, he was poisoned with something that looked like a dioxin-type compound. Man, you're obviously a space after that, you want to talk about chloracne. He was a really good example of that. And I'm certainly hoping that none of you sustained that when you were in Vietnam. So, those are the quick onset things after active duty. Then later in life, other conditions can kick in. There are conditions that are related to your blood cells, those little things that go swimming through your blood vessels. Um, and in particular, you don't have to be 50, 60, 70, or 80 years old to get something called Hodgkin's disease or non-Hodgkin's disease. Those are Agent Orange-related presumptive conditions. They have to do with the lymph nodes in your body. Sometimes you can feel lymph node in your neck, way of sore throat, hopefully those will wipe. Sometimes you get them in your armpits, they may or may not go away, and if they don't, be sure to expect me to see a doctor and perhaps get one biopsy. Um, and sometimes these lymph nodes unfortunately can occur within your body, and you're not aware of it until, man, you get sick. And if that happens, and you get to a doctor, and you have upward diagnosis of lymphoma, you want to get to your VBA folks, or whoever you use, VSRs, VBA's, to put in a claim for it, because those are presumptive conditions, Hodgkin's and non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. There are also, even in younger years, problems with peripheral neuropathy again. Okay, but it's a severe peripheral neuropathy, it's not something that happens within that first year. It creeps up on you, when you're in your twenties or thirties or forties, and you're starting to develop numbness in your arms, your legs, your feet, and your toes, for no apparent reason. It's not like you have diabetic neuropathy, that you're having a stroke, but there's that middle-aged thing of peripheral neuropathy. If you should have, if you get diagnosed with it, there's a reason to put in a claim for that, because that is an Agent Orange presumptive. Now, I assume you all know the word presumptive. If you have a condition X that's associated with Agent Orange exposure, it is called a presumptive, it is presumed by the military and federal government and everything that it is related to Orange, and you are entitled to put in a claim. And if you have what you're claiming, then you become service-connected and potentially compensated. I hope that makes sense. It only took me three years to figure that out. Then when you're in your 50s, and we all remember the 50s. When you're in your 50s, there is of course ischemic heart disease, and Dr. Prentice went over that in good detail. Uh, and I, the takeaway from that is, if you have ischemic heart disease, or you think you have ischemic heart disease, pester your doctor about it, and if the answer is yes, or even probably, get the best of doctor's notes and diagnostic tests that you can, bring them to your VSR, VBA, whoever you want to see, and submit a claim. And submit a claim. Again, you're stuck with us forensic people, and we're going to look at the evidence and either validate it or non-validate. And if we don't validate it, that doesn't mean we're being mean or bad people, but we're applying our forensic medical techniques to what is provided to us. I should say we get your information provided pretty darn well. You all have to send that in, either electronically, or you get to one of your representatives, they'll get it scanned in, or no, faxed in, to several locations around the country where they have these poor people that do nothing but scan your paperwork into this big system. It's called VDMF, or Veterans Benefits Management System. And we at Compensation and Pension have access to that. So, we can go into that, we can look into service treatment records, if you submitted records and documentation from your doctors, we can look at that, and we can then put it all together along with what you tell us and what transpires during our meeting. I hope that makes sense. It took me four years to figure that out. Some of the things that can kick in. Parkinson's disease, okay? You get a tremor, you get a tremor, um, maybe a rest, or maybe when you're going to do something, but you get, and it tends to get worse, and maybe it'll be on both sides, or maybe it'll bother your feet, or it'll give you a, a face that looks like just a mask without any expression. It's a peculiar disease, it's a neurologic condition, and it is a presumptive under Agent Orange exposure. So, you can put in a claim for that, and certainly will get compensated for that, if that's what it is. Now, one of my best buddies, um, oh gosh, for at least 10 years, he sent this little tremor to his hands when we drank beer or played bridge. So, I know that it happens, people do get tremors that are not Parkinson's, but Parkinson's tends to progress and get worse. So, I hope that makes some sense, and my apologies for my beer-drinking, great for you. Diabetes. Everybody's heard of diabetes, some of you may have it. Um, diabetes type 2, which means it comes on in later life. I should back up and say, if you had developed diabetes while you're in active duty, then you're automatically service-connected for it. But if you don't develop while you're in active duty, later on in life, your service may go up, your alarm system may go up, you may not feel very good, you may be peeing a lot, you may be crashing a lot of fluid, you could be a doctor, you sit on the couch, end up on pills, that's a reason to put a claim for it. That's a, that's a presumptive condition, type 2 diabetes, adult onset. Um, and there are complications of it. It can injure your kidneys, uh, sometimes it can injure other parts of your body that don't work so well. And then there's the prostate. And I do recognize there are a lot of men out here. Prostate cancer became service-connected. It is a presumptive condition. If you have the diagnosis of prostate cancer, it's made almost always now with a blood test, called a PSA, or a prostate-specific antigen. And usually the doctors will get it on us, you know, once we're over 50 or 55, they might do it every five years. You get a little old, they might do it a few more times, they may not, it depends. But if your PSA is high, they're going to shoot you out to the specialists, and very possibly you'll end up with a diagnosis of prostate cancer. That is automatically service-connected, and the amount of benefit that you get is a function of how long your PSA blood test stays elevated and/or how long you are continuing to be treated with either oral chemotherapy or radiation therapy. But prostate cancer, if your doctor says you got it, uh, get the documentation and see somebody and put in a claim. There are, there are these funny little things that people get called sarcomas. Not like that, it's a sarcoma, let's do a sarcoma. Well, a sarcoma is a tumor, actually a cancerous thing, that can invade your soft tissues, your tendons, your ligaments. And it tends to do that, and you see something going on in your arm or leg, or somebody says, hey, you have something wrong, and you, smack, did you know that? Get it seen, get it looked into. If it turns out to be a sarcoma, a good number of those babies are service-connected. You have to have the pathology report from whoever either removed it or did a biopsy on it, and see what happens in terms of treatment. But it's better to get these little lumps looked at and get a diagnosis, and find out, is it something related to Agent Orange? And again, the service people, the people that helped me put in the claims can be very helpful on that. And sometimes they will call us and say, hey, I know this guy with blah, 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 and he's got this documentation, should he submit a claim? Go to your virtual, I will say, yes, let him submit a claim and see what comes out. Then there are other cancers of the respiratory system, your breathing system, okay? Your trachea, your major airways, your lungs. Most of those are presumptive conditions under Agent Orange. But you gotta pull out cancerous asbestos. Asbestos does not fall into, that's a different kettle of fish, hold on. But in terms of lung cancers, again, you will have been diagnosed for somebody at the VA, somebody else where, somebody in a specialty area like Springfield, Northampton, Boston, Worcester, get the, get the information, uh, get the pathology reports if you can, get the doctor's notes, and get some help submitting your claim, because that is a presumptive. So, I hope that makes sense. I wanted to go through these, and there are, there are other conditions out there that, um, the Institute of Medicine is still drawing their fingers on, trying to decide, are these things going to become service-connected? Are your thyroid conditions going to become service-connected? They haven't gotten there yet. They're supposed to have, they had a rule on that a year ago, and now, I don't know quite what they're going to do. Uh, there's a new, strange type of thing. It's a cancer, service-connected. It's called cholangiocarcinoma. Whoop. And what it means is a cancer involving the little ducts, uh, in your goblet or in your bile system. It's not immediately evident unless you turn it on, as John, if we start itching a lot, then you get to see a doctor, and they'll help you make a claim, if, a diagnosis. And if you get a diagnosis, how many times I want to see this? Get the information, get the notes from the doctor, get the pathology reports, get the scanning reports, and get it to someone to help you submit a claim. I think that's probably it for me. Um, I should say that as far as children, though, um, spina bifida, the condition that affects your spine, usually right down around the butt, but sometimes in other areas, potentially they're kind of open, not closed, and it has to be taken care of. It's not a cancer, but it is a, a very bothersome thing that can continue sometimes for a lot of life. The VA won't examine children, we don't bring them in, but if you get documentation about your child having spina bifida in particular, you want to submit that and try a claim. It may be denied because it's not as of yet, depending on what the condition, if service-connected, but you certainly want to put it in. Um, I, I believe that children from Vietnam who have spina bifida are covered, you have to get the diagnosis in and put in a claim. And I think with that, I probably have said enough. I want you to know that I really had a good time at the VA. I was never in Vietnam, I was never in the military. I had surgery on my knee when I was a senior in high school. When I got drafted in 68, I had to go to the Boston Army Base. What a zoo that was, man. Uh, but they looked at my knee, and looked at my surgery report, and they said, you're out of your fort. So, that was the end of that. So, I met men in the military, and I'm much like authority. And I've been a ball at the VA in leagues. I really have. Employees, journalists, there's so much going. The veterans are good, I see a number of you. Often, I've been in your town, I played baseball, I've had softball there, I've had, you know, a meal, I had a cold beer there, whatever, but I know most of the towns in Western Mass are grown up in Buckland. Uh, I'm proud of you all, thank you. So, out there on the tables, we got from the VBA, Dr. Cross referred to, you know, just a few of those presumptive issues. Out there on the table, you see we ran a couple hundred copies of this little pamphlet here, it's called Service-connected Disability Compensation for Exposure to Agent Orange. Please make sure you've got one of these, if you don't, we'll get your name and address and mail you one. You look at like the third page. There's over 40 diseases that are listed here that are associated with Agent Orange. Okay? It might not just be the main diseases that are shown by the VA, there's all these secondaries. It also lists the diseases for the male veterans' offspring and the female veterans' offspring. So, please, make sure you don't leave here today without one of these, or at least you get your address and we'll mail you one. The next speaker that we'd like to bring, well, are there any questions from Dr. Cross before we go on?
Let's leave question and answer for afterward, because that's usually so that we can hit all the medical questions, the benefits questions, and we have someone from the VBA here, that those turn into a very vigorous moment for those who are interested and want to be here, but for those who would like to be able to.
Sure. So, so again, I'm asking, is anybody else in the VA 100%? I'm just going to wait with my other presenters. Okay.
Curtis Edmonds is going to speak to VBA.
So, what you want next, which are thrown around here. Okay. So, next we have from the Veterans Benefit Administration, that's the branch of the VA, not related to the healthcare, and he'll speak about some of the issues and situations and the process there. Why don't you mind, Chris? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. All right, so, driving out here today from Boston, and I'm a Navy veteran, originally from Chicago. I was driving, and I was thinking to myself, you know, I understand how why the people traveling from out here, they finally do come to Boston. If you don't make sure they're happy when they leave Boston, that's why they want to slap you around, because that's a long trip. On top of that, I recognize too that women must be serious up here with my role, most of that's just my role, and I was like, wow. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, it's absolute pleasure for me to be here today. A couple of things I'd like to start with when I come out to be invited to speak here is to establish who I am, so you know what we're doing next. Number one, I did 21 years of active duty for the United States Navy. I just hit my 30-year mark, or I will hit in the next couple of months. Now, I'm not as handsome or as sexy as most of you, but I'm trying, okay? Next, I'm a disabled veteran, so I'm the people that I serve. Now, although, all of us men may not have the same things, my job is to take care of you, because I understand that I am you. So, I don't come out here on Saturdays or Sundays just to be here to look cute, I'm out here to work for you, and if I can help you, that's what I'm here for, and to other people from my staff that I own. So, if you have questions or be concerned about something, please stop by at the minimum, what would enter? what we're entered to ask, that's why we're here. Last, I'm at the regional office in Boston, and that doesn't mean that we don't wanna come out to Central Western Mass to help you guys out. And we're right now in the process of working with the people in Westbury and Northampton to try to get a, uh, electronic process in place, so if we can't make it all the way out here, usually can't make it all the way there, if you can get to Westbury C O B C Northampton Hospital, you can sit right at the camera, and you don't see me just the way I'm looking at you, the only difference is you're gonna be able to text each other or be able to have the same conversations, kinda like if any of you guys ever had a video conference, and you had to do it at an alternate location. Why the line is, get in front of somebody, a judge is a judge, a rep is a rep. But I come from a generation where you talk to people, you shook their hands, and you were able to work when you was gonna do something, that's what you did. So if I'm talking to you, and we see each other, sometimes that's what it is, you want to know a person hears you, wants to help you, and you just need them to know what you're asking for. And it's difficult to sometimes when you call the eight-hundred number, or you're rattling stuff in, or you gave it to somebody, and you don't know if they got it or not, or if it got to us or not. So it's a couple of things I wanna tell you guys to be really helpful to you today. Number one, show your hands. How many of you have received letters from the VA, and before you raised your hand, looked at that letter, did not see what you wanted the first couple of pages, and threw it away? Okay, not that many, and some people just not raising their hands, and that's fine. Next, if you didn't read those, you may be very difficult for anyone like myself to help you. Because the next couple of pages, I can guarantee you, it was probably something there that if you had read it and said, "Evidence considered, placed due date." If you looked there and did not see everything that you thought you turned in, that's the first thing you're supposed to tell us. Well, listen, I know for a fact, I lived out in California for two years, I went to the hospital system in California, how come you guys don't have those records? I can see it in the evidence considered. See, before somebody sent you straight to an appeal, which is taking anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four months to be heard, why wouldn't you rather get a reconsideration? Let me say that again, if you give your decision, and you immediately look at it, and you think there's something wrong, and you don't understand why you were getting what you were asking for, you need to look at the third page, because that tells you everything the VA used to make that decision on your claim. If you don't look at that, or you don't have somebody who's versed and had to explain it to you, you probably just put yourself in a situation where you're angry, aggravated, and you think that nobody really wanna help you, they just cut you off in this public level. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard people say, "They just waiting on us to die." Listen, I had uncles in Vietnam, Korea, grandfathers in World War II, so I come from a lineage of military people. So it's a pleasure to keep doing this. I took off the uniform, I keep working to take care of it, awarding you the uniform. So here's a couple of things I wanna tell you, and this has nothing to do with how old you are, what you filed, what you didn't file, it has to do with the fact that, as long as you're able to ask questions about claims, you should get the information from the people who do that. Number one, show your hands, how many of you have veterans, service officers, town agents, or anybody that you know that can help you with claims if you have no computer access and don't know how to use them at all? Okay, why is that important to you? Because those folks are the ones who make sure that they give things to us, and they speak our language, which means they know how to help you file these claims when you can get to Boston, when you can get to the hospital. It's really important that you try to identify who these folks are, because it's a lot easier for you to drive right down the street fifteen minutes than it is for you to drive two hours and twenty minutes to come to Boston, and still not know for sure what's gonna happen today. Second, eat benefits. That is the place where you can go, sign up for your own account, your personal account, and you can track anything, look at anything that you know with a claim, and there's so many other benefits that you're entitled to as a veteran that's in there, simple things like you guys, most of you have property of some kind, you own a boat, you own a house, and each year, that property taxes me to lie to you, because it's only if you're brave when you tax it, am I correct? What happens if the system that generates those letters, that send them out, they all of them don't come to Western Mass this year? You kind of can just start calling the eight-hundred number, then call whoever you can to try to get that letter. You have to see the benefits account, you can go in there and print that letter off yourself. Well, I don't have it up here. Somebody you know has a computer, you got grandchildren, nieces and nephews, and most of them still like you, because you gave them candy and stuff when you was humble behind the wheel. And even if you decided that you don't really like them, use a medium. They use you. Point I'm making, ladies and gentlemen, is, there is a way, and it's not somebody who really cares about what your service is and what you've done, they're willing to help you. Now, this is important, because it's so much nicer for you having a cappuccino or a cold beer, to go in and look and see what's going on. Why is this important? Because if you do need to call the eight-hundred number, you know what you wanna talk about, you know the questions you wanna ask, and you can say, "On this day at this time, I submitted this claim, it's been thirty days, and I haven't heard anything, and I see that the status hasn't changed, can you probably put an update?" That's so much better than this. Where are you guys moving my claim? When did you put in the claim? A couple months ago. For what? Uh, I remember. You should know that I know what you know, you should know what's happening to me. It's not that easy. If it was, everybody got the claim in, and then we'd have to check on it. So what I'm saying is, have your information as best you can, so you can push it to the next person. We have three forms that everybody in this room, at one point or another, they need to use, and they're in this order. VA Form 21526EZ, that's the claim that everybody will use to put in a claim, period. No alternative forms, nothing extra. But the difference between the old system of claims that we use now, is each time you file a new condition, you have to fill out one of those claims. Because it's a quicker process with the claims, and we know, because before, you put a claim in in January, forget about your right to, you put that in in March, then you put something in in April, and what used to happen is, every time we got that information, we'd slow up the first two claims until we got everything from the last one. And now, if you have a claim there for here and lost, we're gonna try to get that process through and get it finished, and if you get the next one there, we're gonna work on that moving forward, so we're not trying to, I'm sorry, put it all together, so you guys can, and you're sitting around waiting six, seven, eight months, and you don't have a claim or anything that's answered. What we wanna do is get you an answer or a decision as soon as we can, and get you something, and then we will work on the rest. But under no circumstances should you think, "Well, should I put one in, or should not." Have a service officer, when you call, ask questions, when we come out to talk to you, take advantage of asking if you got a question, because we wanna take care of you, and that's the easiest way to do it. Next, if you filed for pension, which is an age and a income-related benefit, not to be confused with service connection, it's simply because you're sixty-five years of age or older, ninety days of service, one day more time, and you have an honorable discharge, and you just need a little extra cash, or you just decided you wanted to file to see if you qualify for the pension. The pension is income-based, so if some of you guys sitting out here, you got a net worth of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I wouldn't waste time filing for pension if you really don't know how to get it. Okay? It is for someone who really has a condition that's developed over time, and you just wanna file for it simply because you're a veteran. And then 21534EZ, that's if you filed for, uh, benefits associated with someone passing away, and you were a widow, or a child of a veteran who passed away, and you wanna make sure that you see what you're entitled to. So you will put that one in, and I will talk to you about deceased benefits, burial benefits, anything else that goes along with that that's associated with it. So if you're in a situation like that, and a lot of you guys have stuff, just like I did, you got it tucked away somewhere, nobody knows where it is, listen carefully to me. The people who are gonna be responsible for taking care of those things for you after the fact, wanna do the best they can, and issue any honors, and entitlements, and services that a town, the state will offer you as a veteran. But if they can't find that box that have all your paperwork in it, we can't do a lot of much to help them. And if they need that like, right away, because the burial happened the next weekend, I don't think you can get it to fourteen Mathias, unless you come into a regional office and ask for it. And even then, some of you guys didn't start out here, you joined someplace else, and if it's not in the state of Massachusetts, it's gonna take us time to find it. So as much as you can, try to provide your folks or your families with the documents that they need to at least walk in the door and say, "Listen, my grandfather, my dad, my mom passed away, they were active military once upon a time. What are they entitled to in the state, what are they entitled to with the federal government?" You wanna make sure that you make it easy for them to take care of you, because a lot of places will offer you the honor of honor, they'll offer you state burial benefits, they'll offer you, if you wanna be buried at a place where it's just for military folks, or the state cemetery, or down in Oregon Mass at the national cemetery. You have to have paperwork to do that, so if you got that someplace tucked away, and nobody knows where it is, you dig it out and tell them. And even then, something happens, this is what you need. Last but not least, we wanna make absolutely sure that if there's something we can do for you guys before we leave this beautiful town of Rainfield today, come by and see us. If not, get some information for us, and we'll get in contact with you. We'll do the questions and answers when I'm done, but the main reason again that we have here today is to make sure you guys know that we understand, it's not always easy for you to talk to people, or talk to VBA people, or hospital people, or a combination of them all in one place. So that's what we're trying to do, to be on this panel, get together, and change the culture of VHA being over here, and VBA being over here. We work together now, and doing a lot more of this outreach, and a lot more of these events, so we can try to get you guys a one-stop shopping experience versus, you go to the hospital, they have no idea what we do, you come to us, we try to send you back to the hospital. Not that we know everything the hospital does, or they know everything we do, but we generally versed in each other's business, so we know who to send you to next, and you don't feel like you're getting a runaround. Other than that, I'm gonna put this hand up, this one, I'm gonna give you the other one.
So I wanna echo what Curtis said, and we have at least once a week here, doing the twenty-six towns of Franklin County, and even when we help people come across from Long Hampshire, Dad died, I wanna get him a footstone, okay, where's his discharge? Don't know. Never seen one? He comes from Colorado? So please, echo me what he said, and make sure your family has a copy of your discharge as a minimum, okay? Don't leave them in the lurch when you leave, it can create a lot of heartache for your loved ones, if you're not keeping them in the loop. So don't be a stubborn winking. Next person I'd like to introduce, before we get to the question and answers, is Rick Weedman, from VDA. He's their head legislative person down in DC, and we invited him up here today to give us an update on some of the latest that's happening down in Washington.
First of all, it's great to, it's great to be with y'all. When Bill Martin and I first met each other, my home was in Dakota Flannan, and it's not an accident that VDA Chapter Number One is in Brooklyn. So this area of the country was one of the first areas that we set out to help organize. And Bill, who's now mayor for this town, was on our regional board of directors, and was an important national leader at that time, and has moved on to do things here, and became a nurse, et cetera. And provided kind of leadership within the VA, as well as specifically here in Western Massachusetts. So it's a real honor for me to be back with Bill Martin. I work in Washington, but nobody I'd like to greet at nothing. And I work for the Officers and Board of Vietnam Veterans of America, and for the State Councils, including the Massachusetts State Council and the chapters. And we are very much a grassroots-driven organization on every. We organized beginning in nineteen seventy-nine on really three issues. Number one was age orange, which we were told was a communist plot to discredit America. Number two, PTSD, they said it's all in your head, you guys are about to whine, "Vietnam vets, it's not for real." And of course, it was for real, with for real for every generation going back to the millennium, for those who experienced combat. And thirdly was judicial review. We put our lives and lived on the line in defense of the US Constitution. Not a particular government, not a particular policy, not a particular war, but in defense of the Constitution. And in that Constitution, there's three separate and equal branches of government. Congress, the executive branch, and the judicial branch. Everybody has access to the courts, including illegal aliens, except veterans. And this in loco parentis system that was put together to basically patronize those who had worn the battle, is simply unacceptable, and never was acceptable, it might be, but certainly is unacceptable in the twenty-first century, and it's time that we changed it. And it is changing, simply because we rejected a lot of the stuff that our father generation accepted. And that's how vet centers came about, and that's how getting out into the community came about, and that's how veteran-centric models of organizing the VA and culture came about. Because of Vietnam vets, but the Gulf War vets and the OIF, OEF veterans behind us, essentially our children and our grandchildren, are changing that culture further, that they're not accepting, "God, we've always done it that way." Oh, honey. Why do we always do it that way? The benefit system is a total scandal, and it all revolves about to one thing, and that is, there is no mechanism within VA to have binding precedent. The Court of Veterans Appeals can rule in a five-judge panel on Monday on a certain issue, and at the end of next week, an individual judge on the Court of Veterans Appeals can rule exactly the opposite, and there's nothing to stop them. This is nuts. The Veterans Benefits System is ultimately a system of laws and regulations that were promulgated pursuant to law, and it's a right, it's not something no less pleased if somebody handed you because you're poor or sad sack. We used to argue with Sonny Montgomery, who I as an individual love, but we argued like the victims with PTSD and age orange, and no judicial review. And he said, "Look, you guys, you boys, if you got some poor vets shot in the mud, we bring them in, I'll make sure he's still here." We said, "Mr. Chairman, that's not the point." It's not who you know, it's what he did. What he did, what is hard to do, and that's the reason why he or she has this right that they're due, because they were harmed by virtue of military service. When it comes to, uh, this sounds like I'm getting off on a philosophical, I'm not involved. One of the hottest issues going on in Washington now is the issue of the feudal system is totally broke. And I agree with them, it is broke, but it's broke because there is no way to set binding precedent. And instead, what they wanna do, instead of correcting all problems, is they wanna continue going too fast through the icebergs, and rearranging their chairs on the Titanic, and think somehow that's all for profit. It's crazy. We have, last fall, all the other major veterans organizations, Big Six, of which VDA is one, but also another, twelve organizations, all came out in favor of this bill called Modernization Act, and we were the only ones who weren't in favor. And so finally, it came to a showdown, and... And so finally, it came to a showdown, and the then Deputy Secretary, Ted Easton, that guy, and Sloan got me to give my word that we wouldn't actively oppose it, because it was the end of the Congress, and if they didn't get that through, they wouldn't get anything through. Well, he's long, it's a new administration, it's a brand-new Congress, and people said, "But you promise." I said, "I promise to." Sloan's long, he's retiring, and he's down in Hilton Head laughing. So all bets are off when it comes to that. And our point is that, no, we're not gonna go along with this. That we're going to continue to push that we need real binding precedent and judicial review. So when a decision is made, you can then automate it and it calls right across the board. Because now, you have the VA adjudicating 100,000 claims, 100,000 times. You adjudicate, and if it goes up on appeal and you set the precedent, then you change the rules on the machine and you run it through. It is absolutely getting, this is what Friday's second does, it's absolutely unconscionable that the appeals are lagging the way they are, one. And two, that the decision is made on the same claim by different clerks in the same office, comes out different. That's crazy. That is arbitrary. It is capricious and therefore non-constitutional. And so this appeal segment, we're hearing a great deal more about it. And among the wish of one piece of legislation that would back it is called the Veteran Civil Rights Act. Basically restoring your right to seek regress in the courts. And if anybody deserves that, veterans. So having said all that, it has to do with claim no matter what it's for. When it comes to Agent Orange and to, and I say toxic exposures, because frankly, it is the same people who are withholding information on Agent Orange that are withholding information on Gulf War explosions, that are withholding information about the burn pits, who withheld information from the atomic blasts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's the same small unit in VA and called environmental hazards and public health. And it is the same small unit in DoD. Among other things, we've called on the Secretary of VA and on the Secretary of Defense, Secretary of VA to press and to cage for the SecDef to lift and declassify all of the records having to do with toxic exposures. They said, "We can't do that, that's secret." Really? The bad guys have this stuff, how do we know that? We gave it to them. We talked about the use of it. The only people who were denied the information are the veterans and the American public. And at one point in one of the suits we brought in the last 15 years, DoD attorney gets up and says, "They're right. They were exposed, but they know they were exposed, so it's okay if we deny it." And everyone's like, "What'd he say?" And the judge was astonished, and she looked at him, and this is in Federal District Court in Washington, and said, "Excuse me, Counselor, could you say that again?" And he said, "Well, they know they've been exposed, so it's okay if we deny it." And she said, "That is absolutely absurd. Why in the world would you not tell the truth, which you are bound to do for this court, even though you're the government lawyer?" And he said it again. That of course, the vets know they were exposed, it's okay if we don't tell the truth. Well, the problem is, if the government doesn't tell the truth and they withhold evidence, the veteran doesn't get the claim through. We didn't win that case, even though we won in a matter of law and a matter of fact. They still found in favor of the government. And sometimes you win it, sometimes you lose, so we turn back to legislation. And we have check-ins on both sides of the aisle on this key issue of the toxic exposures. We are determined that the young people who served in the latest wars don't find themselves, they and their families, in the same position we are 40 to 50 years after they served. There's no reason for that. And so that's why the bill we got through last year focusing on children and grandchildren was called the Toxic Exposure Research Act. Not just Agent Orange, but that includes Lashun, that includes radiation exposure, that includes shipboard hazards and defense and the heat contamination program. Whatever toxic exposure people were exposed to in the military is lumped into that. There was a lady who personally, I'd like, I think she's a lovely person, and she retired, but her last major deal was last year convinced the Senate Committee that it was unreasonable for them to leave the bill intact, because she said, "There's no such thing as male-mediated birth defects." And we said, "Yes, there is, there's plenty of published, peer-reviewed literature on this issue." But the Senate Committee got spooked, and they made the bill focus on a study to find out whether or not male-mediated birth defects are biologically plausible. So that's what the current committee that was in pattern pursuing to that statute is focusing on. So we are spending a good deal of time now on our staff compiling every peer-reviewed study we can find, and even something aren't peer-reviewed that was published anywhere in the world in regard to male-mediated birth defects. They're not arguing that women who served in Vietnam, that their children and possibly grandchildren may in fact have inherited birth defects that have changed. But we believe it is possible, and people whom we talk to who are respected scientists say, "Yes, it is." It doesn't alter the gene, it's called epigenetics. What it does is change the acids that serve as a trigger to other acids, which triggers certain traits on a gene. So that you have kids who are four and five years old having heart attacks or having lung cancer and nobody even has all the stones. It's things like that, the anomalies, there's just too many of them, not just among our children and our grandchildren, meaning Vietnam vets, but frankly, the Gulf War vets. There are several, we work pretty closely, they don't have their own organization, unfortunately, but they do have leaders who we work with pretty regularly. And they do have support groups of the young women who have, I know one that has three kids that all have birth defects. And she was directly in line with what was called a cloud from Canaccia. And Canaccia was a chemical weapons dump that the Iraqis had that special forces blew up. So this particular panel is gonna be absolutely essential that we win on this one and that we get the recommendation positive from the IOM on this question. And once that's done, then we can start to loose the dam, if you will, about enough research dollars going into specific kinds of birth defects and how possibly can we mediate or remediate the damage that has been done by the original toxic exposure. The second bill that we had planned to introduce last year, but it just, uh, I don't know why we thought we could do two major pieces at the same Congress, but we did. The other one is, it's called the Toxic Wounds Registry Act. And it's more directed towards the veterans as opposed to pro journ. In other words, not towards the kids and the grandkids, but it's about whatever condition the vet and or herself has. And, um, and forcing the VA to do real registries. How many people here ever took an Agent Orange physical at VA? Anybody? I did. You know what that is? That ain't a registry. That's a mailing list. They have no idea, if you looked at my name on the list, how I'm human, because it's not keyed to my electronic healthcare record. The only registry they have at VA is the Hepatitis C register. And why is that? Because we argued up and down in scientists and got our way thanks to Dr. Lawrence Deaton, who was head of that at the time, that section, that it is Hepatitis C, they can tell you what's happened to each person who's tested positive. And they, if they were being treated, and what's, what's the disease. And now, of course, you have what is tamab, you would cure it. Before, you only had treatment, and frankly, the treatment was what's the disease in some cases. We need to do that for Agent Orange, we need to do that for people who served in Camp Lashun. And frankly, we believe we need to do that for people who served any place where there may have been a toxin. If you look at World War II, through Korea, through the atomic blasts, through Vietnam, through Gulf War I, and through both Afghanistan and Iraqi war, what is the real common denominator that was used in every single field? And the answer to that is pesticides. At the submolecular level, I know this sounds stupid, I'm talking about this stuff, but, but it's important because at some molecular level, which in fact is what is impacting on the epigenetics, it works the same as dioxin, it meaning organic phosphates. And that's the basis of DDT, and then naphthalene, and then this on and on, right down to the present day, wherever the US proves in a rough place and they're using pesticides all over the place. And I'm gonna add, Monsanto just got the new OK, a pesticide that's gonna be used on US farms, along with 24D, which Monsanto claims is harmless. You may know there's two main elements in Agent Orange, 24D and 245T. They say, "Well, there's no 245T and 24D is harmless," but it's not harmless. They claim it is, but they're not force-approved. And so what is happening to our grandkids? It may well be that we passed on a genetic weakness, if you will, because of our exposure to poisons in Vietnam or elsewhere in the world while we were in military service. But that's not exacerbated because it's getting into what they eat and what they print. So it's appropriate that this gathering today is unearthed there because it is connected. If we're gonna sustain life in these United States of America, we've gotta stop befouling our best. The old crash, crash saying, "Don't poop where you eat." Well, we've been pooping where we eat in this country, and we need to stop it. So that's a larger question, but in the meantime, what we need you to do is to write for Congressman, to write for Senator, and just push hard on toxic exposures. And through Boomer Center, where's Boomer Center? It's here somewhere. But through Boomer Center or any of the VBA folks, they can give you the heads-up about what bills are pending, or if you go to the VBA website. This booklet is enormously valuable, we know it is. It's the one we can't keep and print, no matter how many tens of thousands, twenties of thousands we print of it, because it is so valuable that people all want it. But it is available, if you didn't get a clean copy today, if you go to vba.org, or if you just Google "VBA self-help guide" for service-connected disability compensation for exposure to Agent Orange or test, Agent Orange self-help guide, we'll probably get you to the link where you can print it out at home or your grandchild can print it out. It was a genetic change somewhere around 1983, 85, and these kids, they have the gene for doing all this stuff, you'd let mine. I have to struggle, you know? And usually, they say, "I can't make the remote work, I need a 14-year-old." Heck, it's now grown and out of the house. So go get one of the neighborhood kids, they'll be programmed in on it. It will continue to be a battle on toxic exposures. It is a battle we cannot lose because it impacts on not just our children and grandchildren, but the children and grandchildren of the current generation. We've gotta have a mechanism to start to straighten this out so that you have registries in the beginning. People were talking earlier about what's service-connected and what's not. The diabetes rate is more than double for those of us who've served in country versus those who've served in continental United States. In epidemiological terms, this kind of thing never happens. I mean, they deal with tenths of percent as significant variation, with double plus. And for prostate cancer, it's almost triple. This is astonishing stuff. And we believe that the case that we made to the IOM, the IAM Institute of Medicine, or now called National Academy of Medicine in regard to additional body conditions, don't even begin to cover it, but this secretary needs to do what's right. Stop listening to the green eye shade people. And nobody said, "Hey, we can't afford any more supportive fire from New Jersey and Iowa," so you can't do it. My point is, if you can take us to war on a credit card, by God, you could use that same credit card to take your men and women who fought that war and your families. Thank you.
So before we get to the final question and answer period here, I have one last speaker who'd like to come up and talk about her experience with her veteran husband from Vietnam. And then what she's done, we'll turn the floor for questions and answers with the VA staff. And they'll answer any questions that we can get done today. And again, before you leave here today, either make sure you've got some contact numbers from my staff or your VA staff or from the VBA's, you know, so we can continue to get the answers. The idea here today was to just give you a kind of a shot in the glass of information so that not even though at least where you can turn to get more information. And if you can't find any answers with the hundreds of years of experience out here, God, I don't know where we can get the answers. Please, don't leave if you have questions, do not contact me. So Dee Brooks, who'd like to talk for a couple minutes?
Good afternoon. I am so pleased to be here today to speak about... I'm so pleased to be here today and get to speaking about my personal experiences in dealing with the VA, the IC, and CHU VA. And I hope that I can help many of you navigate the system, both husbands and wives. I was married to my husband, Corporal David Brooks, for 35 years before small cell cancer took his life. He was also diagnosed with heart disease and prostate cancer. He served in Vietnam between 1966 and 1967. He was a Marine who served proudly with the 3rd Marine Division. And his university station, the RANAD, he... and his university station, the RANZ. One critical medical issue that happened in Vietnam is when he began having serious rashes on his skin. It was so bad that they had to evacuate him to a ship for treatment. He was on board for three to four weeks. He did get better, but the doctors could not find what was wrong with him. However, a few years down the road, he began to get the rashes again, and it was presumed that when the VA said it might be chlorangeine. In 1978, the news came out about Agent Orange and PTSD. He was concerned that it was prevalent without first child. For the first time, things about his deployment to Vietnam began to make sense to him. He remembered that he was told to drop to the ground every time he saw the chopper spring. And so, um, one other thing is that he remembered it, I, I, I do have to add this, since when he was having, um, his dreams, it's when he woke me up and told me about it that he remembered it. Now, and also remembered that this remembrance of his time in Vietnam happened 12 years later. Now, during the 1980s, Dave went to the VA hospital in Leeds, Mass, to do enough treatment at the PTSD clinic. He learned a lot there. He was so grateful that he attended. He finally understood why he was feeling the way he did. He not only helped himself, but it saved our marriage. As a result, for nearly 15 years, he attended there for two weeks. Why? Well, that was a kind of anniversary day when he served in Vietnam. In the late 1990s, Dave became 100% permanent total for health problems incurred by his service. He began to go to VA to look at the issues that came up. As a result of his rating, he became eligible for treatment at the VA. And I can say in all honesty, that the care we both received there was wonderful. Why? Because during that time, if you were 100% permanent total, your spouse could receive treatment at the VA, and treatment I got. And now, the VA really tried to help him in other ways than the chemo. And also, the VA was wonderful. Unfortunately, on October 5th, in the year 2013, he lost his battle with his disease. He fought for two years with grace, dignity, and humor until the very end. After his death, I continued to receive excellent care at the VA. Unfortunately, in February of this year, my medical care at the VA ended. Why? Because in February of this year, I turned 65. So now I have medical care. But I also have to tell you that the VA is giving you secondary insurance on its CHU VA. And I am so, so grateful for this. Now, because of his service and because of 100% total for his disability, I receive DIC. And what is DIC? DIC means dependency and indemnity compensation. And it's a tax-free monetary benefit paid to eligible survivors and military service members who died in the line of duty or eligible survivors of veterans whose deaths received have resulted from a service-related injury or disease. In closing, I would like to offer a message to you and your loved ones, to veterans. I know that many of you say, I'm fine, or someone is worse than me. But please remember this. When you enlisted and raised your right hand, you promised to serve your country and serve it well. But in doing that, the government also promised to take care of you. So please, take advantage of all the VA can offer you. And veterans, I also must add this. Please include your wife or significant other. When my husband was diagnosed with a cancer, we went up to Weyler Rejunction, great hospital, and I took a notebook with me. And my husband asked me, gee, why are you doing this? I said, that's why I can take notes. Okay, he said. So we saw the chief of oncology, and one of the first, who said, oh, Mrs. Brooks, you've got your notebook. Great. So please, please include them. The last thing I wanna talk about is, I'm gonna ask you, you need to, please come to the Upper Pioneer Veterans Office on Main Street. I volunteer there. I volunteer there helping veterans of all eras in finding jobs. I also counsel widows and also help them find jobs. So if you're in that category, please come. You can also come here to see what you are entitled to, with assistance in finding a job, or, you know, or just connecting with others in the same boat. I'm also encouraging you to come up to me after this program to ask any questions that you need to have answered. I thank you for your service, I thank you for your families, because my son served, and he was in Marines, and two tours there, and a women's camp, and and I come from a military family. And I'm just telling you, thank you so, so much.
Thank you. So now we have to have the VA come up and maybe do some questions and answers on anything that was discussed today. And like I said, don't leave here without us giving you the answers.
And hang on just a minute, folks. Uh, there's one more piece when it comes to the nuts and bolts. We talked about conditions, we talked about getting your evidence, we talked about submitting claims, uh, that unfortunately takes a while to get your claim, uh, reviewed by somebody, and then ultimately, they're gonna send in this little thing called a 2507, which is a request for an evaluation of a veteran with a claimed condition. And those requests fall to Brenda and the staff in compensation and pension. And Brenda might have a couple of things to say about it.
As part of the effort of trying to help the VBA and work as a team, like Curtis said, part of the biggest issue is being able to read the letters that are sent to you guys. These letters are very important, they tell a lot of information. One of the letters that are sent to all of you guys is where we come in. It tells you guys that your closest VA is wanting to be scheduled and appointed to. Sometimes it's always the VA, and you'll work with a contact outside. Um, either way, that's us telling you they're gonna have your exam. Now, the Zanzu that requests your claim will get an appointment, just the ones that they may help with, with additional information. I'm knows if you receive your letter, you can feel free to go ahead and call your local VAs, if we don't have the request for it, we will try to help you find the VA that does. Also, part of the thing is, this is very, very important, that you all will know, that with your appointments, they are all negotiated. So we will work with you for your scheduling, your availability, also with ours. So please, please, whatever you do, when you get these letters or the information, either from the VA in part of your claim, or from the VBA to just update you as to where you are, please open everything and read the information. It is very, very important. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
For every flag that's set foot in the country, it's been well over 40 years. Now, my question is, for some of us who are in their late 70s, I for one, I'm okay.
Dr. Cross, you mentioned earlier...
Someone's asking a question up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got a question up here.
Those who watch, they may have been involved with Agent Orange. Can we still expect medical problems?
If you go to a casino, you're gonna land. That's a little difficult question to answer. You may or may not, it's like going to Moheem and Sun. You may win when you pull that baby down, or you may get nothing. So you may get conditions, or you may not get conditions.
Let me give you an example.
Go ahead.
A good friend of mine died last week ago yesterday. He was in the airport, and he, he told me that he used to drop their stuff. Now, he was 70 years old today, would have been his 71st birthday. He died, he, the doctor said he died of a heart attack. Okay, my question is, is it possible that his exposure to Agent Orange, because he was so close to the stuff, could that have contributed to his demise?
Well, it certainly could have. And as, as Dr. Prinz has said, is that ischemic heart disease gives you an ear attack and kills you. It's that type of condition that is related to Agent Orange, and perhaps his surviving spouse, child, whatever, can go get that information and put in a claim.
Dr. Cross, you mentioned earlier about the first year after leaving the country with the symptoms that you might come up with. Unfortunately, for most of us, well, I can't say that for myself, notice of information was available. I can find out about Agent Orange, PTSD, uh, TBI, or any of those other diseases well into my 40s. And, you know, it's, it's hard to understand how people can be denied for stuff that might have happened 45 years, 46 years ago. And when you go, um, for myself personally, I go up and I was having some treatments on them, and they're asking me questions, and they're asking me within the last two months, um, in regards to PTSD, for example. How have I been dealing with this in the last two months? 46 years ago is when I need to be helped. Don't make sense.
Well, it may not make sense, but I think we're trying to do the best we can with providing, uh, healthcare to veterans, and certainly Dr. Prinz might contribute to that. And as far as compensation for exposure and conditions, you know, that's what I tried to address today. Granted, if in 45 years you've had this, but then again, whatever condition or condition you have related to Agent Orange, the other question that comes up is, does your condition disable you? Does it keep you from doing anything? If it is mental health, I'm not expert on PTSD and things like that. So I can't really answer that part of it. Or if you wanna ask me some more afterwards, I'll be wandering around.
But we do have PTSD experts, of course, at the VA. And you are right, there is a war in justice that hasn't heard of the years. And that's why we're very fortunate to have an advocate here who's been working, you know, doing tremendous things, that lots of people are trying to help make this law more coherent and organized. And it's on the later end for you guys, but it's going to be very applicable by generalizing it from Agent Orange to toxin-based exposure, and looking out for the future generations. So we can say never again to these problems.
Uh, I have a question. I, uh, I was stationed in MKP, Thailand. Can you provide the current status of Agent Orange evaluation in a Thai basis?
The, as currently, what they're, the rules that they're using is only those on perimeter guard. We maintain, if you have hard bases, and so damn small, don't fight, it's very far from the perimeter. Because if you could walk across it, in five, less than five minutes. Um, and the, the places other than corners, other than the continental United States, and Vietnam itself, we're spending time in cataloging, uh, exposures in Thailand, Okinawa, Philippines, Korea, Japan, and Guam. And Guam is a total cesspool, even to this day, of all kinds of stuff. And so, uh, I think eventually, once we run out the scheme, that, um, we'll find that most US bases, whether in the Pacific, in continental United States, or, um, in Europe and elsewhere in the world, that Agent Orange was used along with other herbicides that were equally dangerous to pull back Russia anyways.
And I just wanna add to that, that when you put in claims for this from other countries, those claims are looked at along with your E214, where we've been when we were there, and what can you document about where you served. They will compare that to the match that they have to go by to determine if it is a viable claim or not. Now, having said that, I've seen people with very viable claims and didn't fall into the exact square inch that they decided was compensable. And I certainly have found in favor of the veterans on those. But I gotta tell you, we never do know what happens when we send in our reports. We don't know if veterans get any money or no money. It just is not part of our forensic medicine feedback. The feedback we get is if we do a primary trial, we put in the reports, and then we hear about it. And I can tell you, in our days, rarely do we hear that.
Um, I, I, so my father is of that age. I have a question, going back to the thing we were talking about before, with the, um, children and grandchildren, um, and the health issues, and then, you know, right, not a flyer, it's a, I mean, submit a claim, you will get, you know, but I'm not interested in that, I'm interested in what you, in the research, is evidence that's happening, or research something done, the epigenetic component that you were talking about. Maybe because, like, my father, my father definitely, he said, I'm gonna have this paper, because he has non-hodgkin, non-hodgkin flu, which was diagnosed last year. And then I have a very mild recognition, I've been okay. But my son was already down syndrome when I was 22. So which is highly unusual, it's like a 1 in 10,000 kind of thing. And so, I, I'm just curious, as a mother and researcher, um, what's going on? Like, what, what is, and also, you know, for vets and their grandkids and their grandkids, where it gets skipped, you know, like, it's not like I was walking down syndrome, or something like that, or something like this. But is there, you alluded earlier, like, to grandkids and how they're affected. I just kinda, just want your information or to be pointed in the right direction, as to what part.
So, the research on this has been very difficult. It's epidemiological, when it's studying populations and looking for associations, you know, are these patterns showing up? But those associations are not necessarily the causation that the genetics, our ability to look at epigenetic changes, to look at DNA specifically, has changed tremendously, you know, in the last 15 years. And so, perhaps, some of that research will start to catch up with the epidemiologic suggestions to be able to pinpoint the score. But it's still, you know, it's hard to say what exactly is, or is caused by these events.
The vet's actually, yeah.
The other thing that I will, uh, throw out, and I'm sure you're aware of it, and a lot of you are not, is this new genetic online thing called 23Me, where you put in a lot of information about yourself, they send you a little mouth swab, not the test for marijuana, but to get some, uh, cells out of your mouth. You send that in, and they analyze your genes. And they can tell you a lot of information. My daughter is demanding that I get into that and get going, and I have to do it. But I think it really shows you quite a lot of information. And again, you probably know more about that than I do. And again, you probably know more about that than I do.
Thank you.
You in the front, you were raising your hand.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Can we let him go? Okay, one, two, or do you want to get in line there?
Yes, sir. I was, not to brag, but I finished one hundred and fifty-seven in Boston Marathon, I was two thirty. Then I remained overseas, then all of a sudden, I couldn't breathe, I came down with asthma, went down to about thirty-nine percent. Then my heart kept stopping, I had a pacemaker. Then I got diamond's cancer, it was really rare. Then I got prostate cancer, and then I got neurological stuff. And my doctors, while you're in the junction, are testing me in the writing office, helping me, saying, "Don't dare you be Agent Orange, you've got to fight, you've got to fight for this." And I said, "Well, I never went to Vietnam." She said, "Well, wait, when you went to Vietnam, you were through the right age." Well, it so happened, well, when that happened, everything stopped. Because, "Well, we can't do this, we can't do this, because you didn't make the right country, you didn't make the right timeframe, so we can no longer think of you as Agent Orange." Well, what so happened was, when I was in open hour, I was a facilities officer who unf, refilled all the barrels and took the picture. It took me eight years to go through it. And I went through it, and I put under hazardous chemicals. And they approved, the toxins were there, we approved all these, because the VA kept saying there was no written proof. Well, the reason there was no written proof, because the law said there wasn't supposed to be anything on there, just like when I was in the Gulf War, I was the operator, system operations officer. All the medicine was put up, but not in the health records. They were put on the operation, and when we got back to the United States, they were sick, and they went to the burn lab. I was lucky, I had the photos, and I knew hazardous chemicals had proved. But the thing is, why did we stop? Everything says, "You got this, you got this, you got this." Then all of a sudden, it says, "We can't do this for you anymore, because you didn't make the right landfill, or you didn't make the right thing." That is really frustrating. I would think we're going in because it was the right thing to do, but that really does, a lot of these other veterans really puts in the money.
The issue really is not at this level. It's not at White River, and it's not at North Hampton. The staff here, and most of the staff, overwhelming majority of staff at VA, get them every day, do their doggone is to take care of vets. It all comes back to the one small unit that I was talking about, in VHA. And one, actually, I noticed, five people over on the VBA side, working with people over at the Pentagon, and at Office of Management, but it. And somehow, some way, if we've got out those people with exposes, we will, because we're tired of messing around with them. And they say, "We can't do that, watch, watch." What are you going to do, cut off my hair and send me to Vietnam? Going to put poison on me? Going to blow me up, going to shoot me? Exactly what do you think you're going to do when it's already happened? So, we, it is tough. And the problem is, great people at the local level get put into impossible situations by people who shouldn't be at VA at all.
Question for you, sir, and a question for the doctor. I think it's been a very good seminar, and there's been a lot of talk in respect to Agent Orange and all the problems that are associated with it. Well, I think one thing that either one of you failed to mention was this parasite. It has a huge, huge name, that, if you were, and it's indicative to South Vietnam or to Southeast Asia. And I bring this up as a matter of just trying to inform my fellow veterans that this parasite can enter through any old person. If you're in the rice paddies, across the rivers, or in some cases, where guys out on long-range parole, off patrol, ate a fish, and then this parasite, like, dormant for thirty, forty years, and then it decides to attack your liver or something like that. Would you care to comment on that, or enlighten what residents are here? Thank you.
That is that condition called polangiocarcinoma. It's cancer of the bile ducts, you know, around the liver and the bladder, that is particularly associated with exposure to those fish, flukes, and other sorts of parasites. And I suspect there's a lot more that's going to be found out about that as time passes. I don't know that I have seen anyone with that condition. It's a fairly rare condition that people get, but it is recognized. And if somebody has it, as I've said more a few times, get that person to submit a claim, get the documentation, and get over. Now, there was the time when you put in a claim here from Greatham County, or wherever, that would go to Boston, and be processed in Boston. Well, they've got so many claims, all around the country, that it's very hard to tell where your claim may be evaluated. I get exam requests through Brenda from not just Massachusetts, but maybe from Virginia, from Idaho, from New Mexico, all over the place. It is a very overworked system, and it's going to be that way, I'm sure, for quite a while. They've got the Veterans' Medics Administration on overtime right now.
The gentleman at the end, I just informed you, you should know the death benefits. Could you repeat the phone numbers?
The main form that you want to have is 21-534-EASY. That pretty much takes care of any of those situations, all in one. 21-534, and go to EZ.
And also, the other gentleman mentioned about the AI who saw Agent Orange that for the presumes and that in different airport spaces, is that right?
That's something that's involving, and a problem here is this. Just because you have presumptives doesn't mean that other conditions can't be proven through the normal process. And, but there never are. And so, what we're looking for is a real leadership change and a seat change in veterans' benefits, that does what they claim to do, which is give the veteran the benefit of the doubt. And that doesn't happen when it comes to toxic exposures.
I should worry about my son now, even though his father was in Vietnam, and he took that exposure aside on a different basis.
Two questions up front. Do you have a question?
I've got top first.
Oh, all right.
Were any problems in a orphaned disease that is implicated, even though it's part of society, like, it's not allowed to be recognized? We realize that. Is there still treatment for that, and help that we may get from that? I'm not really concerned about compensation.
It is one of the conditions that Iowa, in their last report, recommended be servicing Agent Orange. And that's the decision that we're waiting on from the secretary. Previous secretary was supposed to deliver that decision early October of 2016, and it hasn't been delivered yet. We are banking on pressure, their friends on the Hill, on the new secretary to make that decision, hopefully directly.
And are you asking, does the VA have neurologists to treat this, or is it treatable in general?
What I'm hoping for is help from the VA, actually. It's not treatable, it's mandatory.
I will certainly work with your VA neurologist and see if they can refer you to one of the tertiary care centers in Boston, they have a tremendous neurologist.
Dr. Cross, I'm a Vietnam veteran. I've had numerous physical, student VA, numerous medical centers. Within the past two years, I found out that working on one point three aircraft to rescue these things is very expensive. Yes, should I ask for a specific, like, physical, or specific blood test to deject? Or is this impacted through normal?
A lot of things are detected through your normal healthcare. You know, here at the AG, we're going to get a TSAI, need for your prostate. There were symptoms of your head and chest pain, or soreness or rashes, things like that. Musculoskeletal stuff, diabetes, muscle dismount, and you have followed by any physician. And the VA is pretty thorough, that's what they do, looking for conditions. Again, you guys who are world masters in all the other descriptions, and people who cleaned those up, and went forward during certain years, are presumed to have had Agent Orange exposure. And if you develop a condition that falls under the recognized presumptive conditions, then you should have that put in light. Absolutely, absolutely. And there's one thing that I would like to say about it, is if you put in a claim in the VBA processes, you're going to ultimately end up talking with Brenda or some other people negotiating your appointment. And I can't tell you how important that is. If you need a hearing aid, hear the call, tell them so. Speak with them, they'll work with you and give you a schedule to see more of us. It takes a little work and a little time, but they're very, very good at it.
My name is John Morley. Thank you gentlemen for your presentations, and our excellent job. Having been exposed to Agent Orange myself on numerous occasions, my great concern is, I have a very large family, there are twenty-five of us, and we have several great grandchildren. My concern is about their concern with Agent Orange contamination. This is very systemic process within the VA system that they can turn to should something happen to them physiologically that may show up, that could be possibly Agent Orange orientation or origin. They would have resources for, that are like third generation. And second question is, are there any reasons why the VA doesn't notify veterans that are hundred percent disabled in Massachusetts, that they are eligible for this $2,000 grant per year that comes out a thousand dollars in August, and a thousand dollars in February automatically? They receive that because I receive it. All you have to do is apply for it.
Can I speak to the $2,000 part of it? And that does not fall under the forensic medicine thing, I'm glad you know that. And I'm glad we're receiving that. As far again, there's grandchildren, there's great grandchildren. We have to rely on the data that we receive, that they submit in, Institute of Medicine and other outfits look at, to try to make determinations. That's not an easy process. A lot easier to tell you, "Hey, you got diabetes." "Hey, you got prostate cancer." That's a piece of cake compared to the second, third, fourth generations. That gets extremely difficult. I'm sorry to tell you that.
Yeah, I have a question for Dr. Cross. Control of most white blood disorders. What about scytopenia? Blood disorder, control of most blood disorders, and not to talk of-
What, what opinion?
I don't know, it's low white blood, common.
Low, low opinion?
It's called scytopenia, is what I would call it.
Well, I think when you get something like that, you're going to be followed. You might be seen by hematologists. They might do a biopsy of your bone marrow to see what's going on, and try to come up with a diagnosis.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying, you know, I'm a hematologist, or that those type of blood disorders are presumptive or not.
If the bad, if they can find a cause. You know, there are some causes like infection, or other poisons or toxins that can do that, or kidney issues, liver issues. That's a tough one, you have to go through what we call a differential diagnosis, to try to come up with a answer for the four causes.
Hello, I'm a patient in the VA, I'm a widow. In 2001, I had a CLO, my daughter was sick. Three years later, I came down with colon cancer. Colon cancer was one of the causes. I filed a plan card, and it was denied. My point is that I went through all the VA claims on the website, and there was four, or five, or six claims that were approved. My problem is, if some were approved and some were not, it's still a risk.
I guess, that would take really looking at the cases that were approved, and trying to figure out how that occurs. That doesn't exactly fit into the formula, as we have talked about today. So I don't know, but I will say that there are some examiners who are not well-trained, who don't maybe have taken all the trainings they need to take. Not at our place, but in some places where that's happened. And if they don't know, sometimes they will very quickly just say, "Oh yeah, that's service trained." And sometimes I've gone through them, not very often. And I'm surprised that they have.
Well, that's part of the problem, you're striking about, is it's not fair when that goes to treatment for the veterans, if something hasn't occurred in some hours.
I agree on that, but I can tell you, most do not get it for colon cancer.
You say?
Not most of people, no.
Not most of people, but some people are. And if it's not, if it's not Wunsch syndrome, they did the DNA test, and they said it wasn't Wunsch syndrome, so nobody else in my family had colon cancer. You've already got exposures from toxins from CLO, so your body is already messed up, your genes are messed up.
I understand what you're saying, but I haven't told you the specific cases, but no. All right, we could go on a long time without that.
Hi, thanks for today. If a veteran has a kerosene-based related disease, bladder cancer, and then has delayed peripheral neuropathy, which will be the order of Agent Orange, and all of this occurs within four years, including two drops of Bell's policy, is that something that would chip, not chip before, but petroleum-based toxins, and related to your exposure to it every single day during your time in Vietnam, and before if you went there as a helicopter mechanic? So that would be a bladder cancer exposure, assuming. And then, would that also fall in delayed peripheral neuropathy? As opposed to early onset, which Agent Orange requires?
It might fall into delayed peripheral neuropathy. I don't know of any association with another disease, but that, of course, is something that they would look at, or neurologists would look at. And when they're difficult cases, maybe we won't see them in our department, but say, "Maybe we'll have to send them somewhere else, where they really have a compensation advantage, and trained neurologists can dig into that."
One second, we'll do the next question. I just wanted to say that gentlemen who left, for everybody who's on the ground, because one thing I know for sure, is veterans talk to other veterans. But let me add that, when you're a hundred percent, I know I'm speaking to this gentleman right here today, when you're a hundred percent service connected, that is as high as you can go. And then, benefit side of things, and Dr. Cross- I'm sorry, so if Dr. Cross and I work together to get exam schedules for veterans, and then they come in, and he sends the information back to us, we have the decision board of people who take that evidence, plug it into a system, and then they find a disability amount for that. So if you're already a hundred percent, and then you come back later with a diagnosis for something else, chances are, they're going to, that's secondary to the condition you already have, and they can't connect you for that to give you more, because they can't give you more than a hundred, then you're going to be treated through a condition you may already have. So he was talking about having this really associated with something else that may cause to be related to. You probably already have been given treatment for that one way or another. Even if they didn't connect you for it, you'd still get the treatment- you for it, you'd still get the treatment at the hospital, but they wouldn't give you any more than you already have. Because when you're a hundred percent service connected, you usually receive the benefits, just like the lady that was up there earlier, you got additional benefits for the family, education benefits, that is the most that they can give you. So if they can't give you a direct service connection for the new condition, it's probably gonna be something secondary to the condition you already have. Myself, as an example, I have an appeal there for my knees, my ankle, and my back. Looking at that condition, they were able to service it back, and give me an increase for the diphtheria, because it was a part of my back, there was already service in that. So they took something for what I was asking for, and connected it through different, uh, matters, and just said, okay, you have this, but now we, we found out that you also got this condition as well, and it's associated secondary to my back condition. Everybody understand what I'm saying? So, I still got the increase, but I got it as a result of them examining the information that they had, and realizing that this is something that was missed, that they could actually connect before, associated with a condition I already had. So they very rarely go and find new conditions, and just keep adding them up. If they can give you what you need, and still treat you for it, it might be associated with a condition that's already up record. So just keep that in mind.
Thanks for the day, and all the information that you shared, organizers, organizing this. I have two questions that drop off. Agent Orange topic, one is the exposure to water within the aviation fuel, that we congested in transportation, ladders where they brought water to the field, um, is there any research on those effects, and what we were exposed to, by drinking water from those? And, um, the other question I have, any research on the long-term effects of fragmentation in, uh, in ladders? And its effects on the immune system?
You're asking about the fuel?
Uh, the ladders that they use, that were aviation-fueled ladders, that brought water to the field, because that's all they had, to get water to the field.
So that's not Agent Orange, I guess it's a different type of exposure, I don't hold on that, but it's not something that I've run into, I've never had a claim.
Well, I've never had anybody could answer the question.
No, I don't. And your second question, you dropped it back down.
The effects of fragmentation in the body, on the immune system, long-term?
Fragmentation in the body? Vasminoity, what do you mean?
It means you hit a fragmentation grenade, and you push your apple on your body, and there's been any monsters-
Oh, 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 the effect of that kind of thing, not necessarily a complete drain.
Right. Uh, I have not seen it, I've certainly seen a number of people with fragments in their bodies over the years, and you document those, and I think they are probably service-communicable, particularly if they are painful or causing problems. But I've not seen anything of not being poisoned from whatever materials were in those, again, unless it is, uh, a complete drain.
Yeah, just wondering about the foreign bodies, foreign bodies, clean bodies, and that's back to the topic.
No, that I haven't seen, and we've certainly seen a lot of people with foreign bodies in their bodies, whether it's in the military or not, and, boy, they keep them until they're dead.
Thanks, if you want.
Yeah, I did a question about Vietnam veterans that are still alive. David Shulkin, my artist, is supposed to make some decisions on presumptives, and I've read in several places, where some people claim there's only four, seven million people still alive, Vietnam veterans. Breaker Women's is doing a study now on certain kind of cancers, which they say there's only eight hundred and fifty thousand, and I feel that they're trying to trump up the number of men that are still alive, because they want to be not presumptive for, say, hypertension and other presumptives. Does anybody know the real accurate count?
No, but if they say eight hundred and fifty thousand, that may more refer to the number of people they are surveying and collecting data on, rather than total number of Vietnam survivors. So it might be a difference in that, that you'd have to look at the specifics.
Right, they're claiming there's only eight hundred and fifty thousand, and other places it's more, so. And the other part of my thing was, uh, as you already, uh, I did some reading on Malefic On, and the MPs in Vietnam used to put their dogs in dip tank, before that, the dogs would get out of shape, and a lot of the MPs had cancer, and they autopsy'd all of their dogs, and they all died of cancer. The military would autopsy all the open B-dogs. And Malefic On causes prevalent chromosome damage, it can be a bad start, and I think that's a big part of the Agent Orange claim, a lot of it is Malefic On.
I know that Malefic On is recognized as a cause of conditions, I'm not aware of shuffling that into the dioxin completely, but I've certainly seen claims associated with that, with Malefic On, and I've read about them, and I believe there's some information on them, going in that fan folder, if you can pick it up.
I have a two-part question. There were thousands of casualties during the Vietnam War on state side, that I was hoping to hear something about today. My husband's a retired veteran, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and a lot of children died from birth defects, rash birth defects, not just single birth defects, but multiple birth defects after we had children. Both my son and my daughter did not father or mother children. Is that possibly what we are managing? And what, we have, we filed a claim about our first son that died, he lived three days with severe birth defects. Paper pusher, did something with the paintwork, we never heard of it, what do we do about all those casualties?
I'd have to say that that is no situation that has not been totally clarified, uh, I think they encourage you to put there the claim for it, and to send the data in, so that it can be maintained, uh, going down the road, and if they come up with any little relationship with it, and decide it's compensable, then hopefully they will contact you on that. You've done a little bit out of my league on that, I certainly have heard about that, I've heard a lot of concern about children, grandchildren, offspring, uh, you know, birth defects, ability to have children, and all the rest of it, and that seems not to have done as much traction as the direct presumptive conditions, unfortunately. And, and whether it will or not, I don't know, and will we realize what they say, I don't know, but I suspect they will continue to look into it as long as the federal government doesn't cut all the money out of research. Time to tell.
All who are here at the end, thank you very much for your patience and perseverance, and you have a good day.
So again, so again, if you've got additional questions, don't leave without getting answers, there's a lady I wanna hook up with the VBA rep, before she leaves, to talk about her claims on the second, third generation, so if you wish, and they're still here, if not, we'll hook her up with another VBA rep.
All of our productions at GCTV are brought to you in part by: The Arborzette Greenfield, assisted living community providing a unique balance of independence and personal care that offers residents and families the most precious gift of all, peace of mind. Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. GCC dot M A S S dot E D U. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at four hundred Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at seven seven four three one nine one, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since nineteen seventy-two. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, or call them at four one three four two two one one four three. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at seven seven two oh eight three eight, and check them out on Facebook. Peoples United Bank, located at forty-five Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at seven seven four three seven one three, or visit them online at peoples.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all the productions at Greenfield Community Television.